Yeah, I would like to call the Fairfield County Budget Work Session to order. Winsboro, South Carolina, two nine one eight zero Wednesday, April twenty first, twenty twenty one. It is now six so eight C M. Can we get approved of the agenda?
So moved.
Has been moved and second, um, to approve or approved of the agenda. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Moses, nay? Agenda stands approved. We have invocation by Councilmember Trapp.
Let us pray. God, thank you for allowing us to gather again today. Please continue to be with us and guide us as we conduct the business of the county. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, um, thank you. We're down to the. Okay, thank you. Um, we're down to the, um, um, discussion, fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. Um, one of the things I'm, I'm hoping that we might be able to do, um, tonight is at the end of the day, um, say, um, about what do we, um, um, what the budget gonna be, um, probably what the, um, what we gonna be requesting from fund balance? Okay, with all the cuts, um, and one of the things we were able to do last year, um, when we did the budget, you know, the budget was about, it was forty six. Was presented to us was forty six million, seven hundred fifty seven dollars and seven forty one. That was the budget from staff. After, after council, um, worked with the budget, it was forty six million, four hundred and forty six, nine hundred fifty nine dollars. For a total, I think one of the things the council was able to do last time was take about three hundred and ten thousand dollars from the budget. So instead of having a five point five million request from fund balance, it was only five point two million. Now this year, the budget sent to us from, from the administration and, and staff is forty four point, forty four. Million, five hundred ninety seven dollars and four hundred fifty four dollars, um, which is a decrease of last year's, um, of three point nine eight percent. Um, come originally, we had thought we might be able to get about ten percent, but, but that don't seem like it's in the, in the cause, but, um. And the original start for, from the, um, fund balances, three, three million, five hundred eleven thousand, two hundred sixty seven dollars. So again, at the end of the day, one of the things we hoping for is that we can say about how much the budget gonna be? And, um, how much money we will be able to get from, um, from fund balance? So now we're gonna listen to, um, um, Ms. Bass.
All right. Good evening, everybody. What you've got in front of you, you've got a couple of sheets. The first sheet that has some yellow highlighting on there. That's been kind of our work in document through the work sessions. So the third column with the yellow highlights is kind of some of the potential increases or decreases after that third work session. And the things that I've highlighted in yellow are items that I think are gonna translate into the motions list for the second reading. So that way you kind of know, um, where this sheet should take us. The second sheet that, uh, has some gray highlighted lines, these are the items coming from, from our work in document that I think will translate to things y'all need to take action on at the second reading. As we go through that, um, I only prepare this list as really to keep us on task. I, I am not in any position to make a motion, recommend a motion. It's really just a task list. Y'all have got to give me that guidance. Um, so as we work through that, you know, I, I need y'all to be sure that guidance is real clear as to what comes on this list, because it's, it's, it's not my motion. It's, it's really just a task list as to what we need action on to, to move it in or out of the budget. So I'll start, um, with the items. In, in a lot of this hadn't changed. I'll probably just kind of go over what, what really may have changed since the last meeting. After the third work session, like I said, I'm gonna take those yellow items and we'll, we'll transfer that to, um, the, the work in motions list. Um, there seemed to be discussion around a millage increase. I've got listed here the different items. Item A would be a recommendation of five mills. This came forth in our original, um, changes. It's been quite a while since we've done it, and I, I, I think that would be a very reasonable recommendation. I believe the average cost per hundred thousand dollar house would be about thirty two dollars. The next option, the current year's CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, is one point two three percent. And that would be two point two four mills. Um, that would generate about three hundred thirty three thousand dollars. That, that's based on what our average, um, rate, our average rate per mill is about a hundred forty eight thousand dollars right now. The next item, we talked about in our very first work session, and I'm not sure we've talked about it a whole lot since, but the library has requested a millage increase. They, they have a separate millage rate than our general fund, um, and that is something that will need action. That is a, one mill will get them where they need to be without question, and that would be about a hundred forty eight thousand dollars. Uh, the next item related to revenue that would require action is to charge the town of Winsboro and the schools for trash and town of Winsboro for, um, use of the detention center. That will need action. We've not done that before, so that I think that will need council action to impose a new charge. Those are the revenue items.
Okay, and.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just ask a question about the, uh, option B.
Yes, ma'am.
Take a look at that millage that you're speaking of. How much per household would that be per year?
Um, well, the, the average. Sorry, the average cost per one mill for, um, a hundred thousand dollar house is gonna be about four dollars. If it is not your primary residence, it's gonna be six dollars. And that's, that's per mill, so for two point two four, you know, ten, twelve dollars. Yes.
When's the last time, I'm sorry, when's the last time Fairfield County had a tax increase?
I believe it was in two thousand sixteen.
Fifteen?
Either fifteen or sixteen. I, I'm not, it's, it's been five or six years.
Questions, Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, to your knowledge, Ms. Bass, have, uh, it been recommended to the councils since two thousand fifteen for, to raise the millage?
Yes, sir. I believe we've talked about it, um, you know, in work sessions, and I, I don't know that it's ever made it forth as a, um, emotion, on the motions list. I think it usually was dissolved pretty quickly. Generally speaking, just, just for a little bit of information, that CPI, which like I said, that's your Consumer Price Index. That is the, the so-called limit for each year, um, without some special conditions or, you know, something like that. Usually what any county can take is their CPI and growth. We never have growth. Our growth is always negative, so our limit is always our CPI. Um, but generally speaking, that's usually almost a given that you would take at least that. The reason that we can take more than that, you can go back three years and take unused millage. So because we haven't taken it in so long, we've got quite a bit on the table for the taking. I don't think we need to go do that. But I do think five mills would, would get us back in a position we need to be. That would be my recommendation. I think that would get us on the track of, of getting back where we need to be. Are, are there any more questions, um, with the revenue items? Okay, I'll go on to the expenses. The reducing the agencies by thirty percent, um, that, that seemed to be a fairly general consensus. I think that would need, um, a vote. There was discussion about restoring, uh, behavioral health back to their twenty twenty one adopted, so I've added that as four B. I think as I followed, um, the, the conversation in the last work session, we wanted, we wanted to reduce some, but then would probably come in with that additional motion to restore behavioral health. So that's why that's split like that.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, as, as I voiced to you last time, I just think it wouldn't be fair, uh, if we're gonna keep it at thirty, we have to keep it at thirty. It's just my opinion. I'm just one person, but I just think if, if we go add and putting one and two agencies on there, you're gonna have other agencies that's, that are within house angry at us. Just my opinion.
Um, 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 I understand your, um, comment, um, Mr. Robertson. One of the things I, I think Ms. Bass is talking about is putting this item on a motion list, and if no one make them, make a motion to adopt, it, it'll just die anyway.
Thanks, sir.
Um, the next item, um, the Sheriff's Department had requested, um, an evidence officer, uh, because that would be a new position that would require council approval. Council had requested to put twenty thousand for newsletter, and I was able to reduce the travel within council's budget, to make that a budget neutral item. And so I think particularly because that is council's departmental budget within the whole, I, I think that would need to be a council vote.
I got a question on that.
Um, Ms. Pauling.
Mr. Bill, if, if that makes it to the motion list, I just think we need to be specific on how it was, how it'd be spent to the penny on how the twenty thousand dollars will be spent on the newsletter.
Okay, um, again, um, um, we, we'll get an opportunity, um, during, during the, um, council meeting to, to make these motions for the motion list.
Um, it was discussed to remove the furniture from the budget. That was a fifty thousand dollar item and to remove vehicle allowance. So those items are on there. Uh, is there any more questions about that, that group?
I just, I just have a question regarding, um, some of, some of the reductions in the agency budget and the, um, four million dollar allotment that we'll get. Are, are you any clearer on what our options are for usage of those funds?
I think they are getting closer. Um, we got some information, um, I guess this week with some initial stuff. We would need, um, registration, DUNES number and such to start applying for the money. I think as it seems that we're less than fifty thousand people, I think our money will come through the state. I don't know yet if we will have to request that on a reimbursement basis or if it will be requested for future expenditure. I would say, I hesitate to say a whole lot because a lot of it is not final. I think some of this agency would probably fall into some of that. The question may be if they're eligible to apply for some of it on their own, if we would be able to accept it and pass it through. So that may, th- those are some of the, the kind of undefined items. So I think they will probably get some of it, whether it's through us or on their own. I'm just not sure.
Thank you.
Um, the next group is, uh, we talked about reducing temporary staff, um, in a number of areas. Those items, I'll just kind of go through those one at the time. I just listed them out. They're all number nine, and I just, you know, A, B, and C them. A would be to reduce recycling by one day. B was to set the recreation temporary budget back to twenty twenty one adopted. C is to set the fire department temporary budget back to twenty twenty one adopted. Um, D is a transit, uh, office assistant. E is some temporary help in the tax assessor's office. F is some temporary help in building maintenance department. G, temporary in animal control. H would be to reduce the lem site hours. And I is to reduce recycling center hours, um, kind of based on seasonality and daylight savings time. You know, like that, to try to adjust that to make it, you know, more seasonable. So thi- this is again basically taking the items from our working list and transferring it here. There was an additional item, um, the Sheriff's Department, through discussion with them, um, they were able to, they have a position. They said they felt like they could go unfunded, um, this year. They don't want to dissolve the position at all. They want to keep it, but can go twelve months without funding it. Um, so that did add an additional reduction of sixty six thousand. And it threw further discussion, which I think we had talked about last time. I don't, I don't think the furlough would work out as planned, as we can't require, uh, departments of elected officials to close their department. You can't shut down the court system. You can't shut down, you know, certain things, and it would not be able to be applied across the board very evenly. So that seemed to, to not be a good idea.
Um, let me, um, make a comment about the, um, about the sheriff, um. Um, I talked to the sheriff, um, last week after the budget meeting and, and told him what we were up against, and one of the things he did is, um, because I, I was talking to him about the furlough, and one of the things he told me, he says, Moses, um, what we can do is kind of look at this and see what we can do. And I guess I want to bring this point because, um, because he said, let me go back and look and see what I can do to try to help out the situation that we currently in. Then he come back and he says, um, look like I can take out a, um, um, freeze a position. And what he's asking is, is just we, we freeze this position this year, and he won't try to fund it this year. Okay, but that, that position is still on, I guess, still gonna be on the books. So, um, he was willing to do that, um, um, to help us and, and trying to, um, um, get this better, get this budget, um, in a better situation that we currently in. So, um, I want to just say thanks to the sheriff for doing that and working with us and doing that.
Um, are there any more questions? Or are there any items that are not on this list that, that need to go? This, this is where I need y'all's direction.
Um, before, before we go there, um, I, I guess I got some on the first, on the first, um, handout you give us as Fairfield County Council Budget Reduction Options.
Yes.
That, that single sheet.
Yes.
Okay, um, the collection of debt.
Yes.
I know it was five hundred thousand last time, four hundred fifty thousand this time. But, um, I guess I'm, I'm hearing in the street another number. So how, how we arrived at the four hundred fifty thousand?
Um, it seemed to be through discussions, um, the amount of money that I guess they had at their disposal. Um, and we were gonna ask if we could request half of that toward the million two that was owed to the county.
Okay, um, Mr. Taylor, I guess one of the things from my understanding, they, I guess their board says, um, ten thousand dollars per month?
We are meeting, uh, with them Monday to try to get some confirmation, uh, on that. We, we have not got confirmation whether it's ten thousand dollars or the four hundred fifty thousand that we may could go after. So we will try to firm that number up on Monday.
Speak on behalf of that. I have had conversation with Mr. Uh, Mitchell in reference to that, and he said, he gave me that ten thousand dollar figure, but I told him that I didn't think that that would, um, be satisfactory as far as the council was concerned, and that's why we're having another, um, meeting with him and trying to, I guess, pinpoint some final numbers. What's frustrating is trying to work with, uh, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Thatcher, we're trying to get us to a place where both sides can come to a, a good point, and we got council members that's going behind us. In my opinions, trying to sabotage the negotiation. Now, I don't know where you got your ten thousand dollars firm from, but as far as Mr. Mitchell was concerned, we, we, we're in a talking process. So, um, you know, I just, if we gonna work, if, if, if. myself, Ms. Bass, and, and Mr. Taylor's gonna work on this, please let us work on it and not try to intervene and, and cause problems.
Um, I don't know who you're directing that at, Mr. Gilbert, but one of the things, I, I, I did have a call from a, from a board member saying what they did. So, so answer this question, did they vote for ten thousand dollars or not?
I did not talk to the board. I talked to Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, but did they vote, did they vote for ten thousand dollars or did they not? A month?
I, if we re- rewind, I would, you would have heard that Mr. Ta- uh, Mr. Mitchell told me at the beginning that ten thousand dollars was what they wanted to do. They wanted sixty months, but I told them, told him that I did not think that that would be, uh, you know, something that the council would agree to, that we would need to renegotiate, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, on the projects list?
Yes, sir.
On, uh, the, can we also put on the motion list to remove the north back lot, merchant parking lot? I guess that's for paving or repairing? Can we put that on the motion list? Also, the farmer's market, the sprinklers and the kitchen upgrade. That'll save us two hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, let's do that.
Two hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, are there any, um, additionals? So at, at, at the end of the day, um, currently, um, with these, um, with the cuts, um, how much, um, is the, is the, do you know how much the budget, um, is, is projected to be?
The, the general fund budget, and again, I like to, when we talk about that total budget number, I kind of like to focus on the general fund as all those other special revenue funds, their grant sources or other sources of money. And if they have a portion of general fund in them, that is reflected as an expense in the general fund. So that's why I really like to focus on that general fund. So for twenty twenty-one adopted, that was thirty-eight million oh fifteen six eighty-nine as it came recommended.
Thirty-eight million, again.
Thirty-eight oh fifteen six eighty-nine. The general fund, that was the twenty twenty-one adopted. As it stood for the first reading, was thirty-five five oh two. Um, so it did come down about two and a half million dollars. With a lot of these, of course, a big part of that is the use of, um, our fund balance. With the, the cuts, the pluses and the minuses that we've discussed, we would be at about six thirty-one use of fund balance, down from three and a half million, and if we, with the addition of removing the two projects, that'd probably get us, you know, roughly around the four thirty-one mark use of fund balance.
Oh, okay, so, um, so the, um, the budget for general fund would be then around how many thirty?
I, I don't know. I don't, I, as I've told you before, I don't usually make the changes actually within the system until they're voted on. I, I just too much in and out, back and forth, and recalculate, and I feel like leaves a lot of room for error, and I'd rather do it once they're voted on and make the changes and update it then.
Um, is, um, do anyone else have any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Pauling.
On the, uh, farmer's market, sprinkler, it looks like commercial kitchen upgrades. It does say general fund slash Fairfield Forward Grant. So is some of that money coming from grant that could be done in the farmer's market?
The kitchen appliances are.
So it wouldn't be no use to turn down a grant if we can get that for the kitchen, right?
I don't know exactly what the split is, but yeah, she would be turning some grant money down and, and killing that project.
So, Ms. Paul, go ahead, Ms.
At this point, regardless of the grant or not, we're in a position, we can't even accept the grant. We scraping the bottom of the barrel. Is the county in possession of the farmer market? Is, uh, the county is?
Yes, it's, it's owned by the, the county.
Um, um, the que- the que- and, and my question is, is that, um, as you look at the, the, um, the, the appliances, and i- is all of that connected to the other? Um, the sprinkler system and the appliance and all that, is all that's connected?
Yes, sir. You would have to have one to have the other.
Okay, so, so how much, how much of that is grant versus how much is, um, county funds?
I'll have to pull that to see. I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get you those numbers.
Also, when we, when we get that, can we get the breakout of the actual work order for the, the sprinkler sensor and, uh, appliances?
We'll get it.
Line item by line item.
We'll get you a detailed one.
Okay, um, to, to make sure I understand this other one, is just the, um, the recycling one day. Um, this is the one I think we all agreed to is, is to having, having the recycler center, um, to, um, be one less day.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is there any other questions, comments from, from council? Is there any, um, questions or comments from council around the, around the budget?
How, how, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Green?
I will tax sale of properties factor into this. Do we have any kind of projections or anything like that?
Yes, ma'am, we have. Um, I would have to look the exact number up, but that's already budgeted in our revenue, um, with our forfeited land commission.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, the question, the comment?
Well, I, I was just asking, um, basically how, how the tax sale, um, money gets factored in, into this. Basically, when I say tax sale, I'm talking about the, um, uncollected taxes and the, the fact that they put the houses up for sale. Delinquent tax.
Yes, ma'am.
How much do it cost for us to operate the swimming pool for, in the town?
Um, I would have to look back. We didn't operate it at all last year. Um, the year before, it was really just the first year getting started. Um, I could gather some information on that. But I know last year is a terrible gauge for recreation 'cause so much of it was just closed.
Okay, um, again, are there any additional questions, any additional comments? 'Cause one of the things, um, Ms. Bass gonna need to do is, is she gonna need to work on this budget, I guess, and what she's asking us for is some guidance around, I, I guess, a lot of these things. So as we put them on the motion list, I think that's, that's in our meeting next time, is not the meeting on Monday night, but the next meeting?
Um, no, sir. I think the second reading is scheduled for Monday.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, so we need to go through some of this then?
Yeah.
Um, from the motion list.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Green?
Is that grant match just for one grant, or is that multiple grants when we take a look at the grant match that we're talking about?
Um, that's an amount that we usually budget, uh, or in general. A lot of it is used for some of the large grants we get with relation to economic development. And I think we determined that, um, we didn't, if, if something, an opportunity presents itself, that we would just bring that back as requests of action and not have it as a budgeted item.
Okay, um, if then, um, are there, I'm, I'm, I'm asking this again. Are there any other question, any other comments for, um, for the staff?
Question, Mr.?
Mr. Robinson?
Ms. Bass, are you aware of what's in the fund balance as of today?
I am not.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson, I think last time we checked, it was nineteen million dollars.
Okay.
What's the question again?
Fund balance, what's in the fund balance currently. I think a week ago when we looked at it, it was nineteen million, and I know it's a snapshot. It could go up, up and down, but it's in that neighborhood, nineteen million.
How much of that nineteen million is restricted or unrestricted?
That balance is, um, what we consider the general fund. The portion of that, um, is the library and a portion of that is the hospital. The largest portion is our operating general fund. Um, if the fund equity changes report, I think I sent that to everybody maybe, um, a work session or two ago. If you look at the, the very top three lines, and that's, that's just how they're grouped, um, you know, according to accounting principles, the hospital and the library are considered general operating, but you, you'll see those three numbers together.
And, um, if, if, if I would say this, um, Ms., um, um, Ms. Ms. Bass, um, I guess the fund balance is a, um, sort of a snapshot in time as, as we all talked about. I guess, and I read this, um, um, report last time, and, um, and nineteen at, at four nine, it was twenty-six million. At, um, four nine and twenty, it was twenty-three million, and then, um, last in four nine twenty-one is, um, nineteen million. So it, it has, but, but again, it is a snapshot in time, and I guess, and Ms. Bass been telling me, um, over, over the time, and we need to kind of look at it and, and we can really tell after the close of, and after June.
Yes.
Okay, and nothing else? Can we get a motion to adjourn? Do it, do it, do we have questions? Do we have any more guidance to, to provide to staff? Um, um, we've looked at this, we've tried to look at it. We've asked them to go ahead and make some cuts. Okay, there, um, there have been, um, some cuts. Um, we, we really, um, cutting, um, um, we really is, um, the, the, the things that we're cutting, we may, we may need to try to revisit them and see where we are. But all of those things is going on the motion list, and if, um, um, in the package that we, that we get sent out, um, please include those items, uh, again, because we added, I think it's about four or five additional items. If we can add those items in the package that come to council and, and, um, for the, um, um, for the motion list.
So the thing that I have to add, um, or rather remove, would be the recommendation to remove the parking lot and the sprinkler and kitchen upgrades. Okay, tho- those are the only
Okay.
two things to add on here. Is that? Okay, I'll get that updated, and then I guess whenever Patty sends her agenda packet, she can include that.
Yep.
And we about have it.
Okay. Okay, anything else? If not, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Move in second that we be adjourned. Um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?